We will start with silent prayer and follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we will have silent prayer and just keep everyone in prayer right now. Amen. Thank you. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a couple of presentations, proclamations to present today. And I'm going to start with the 75th anniversary of Hamilton County Jobs and Family Services, who are the safety net of this county. And so I will start it and we each will have a part to read. It says, "Whereas Hamilton County Job and Family Services began work on January 1st, 1948, as the Hamilton County Welfare Department, when social service and welfare relief offices from the county and the city were combined to serve more citizens."
And whereas, since its beginning, HCJFS has served millions of county residents, helping people when their needs are greatest. And whereas, since 1948, the mission of HCJFS has grown and broadened to include child support, adoption, fatherhood, safe sleep for infants, foster care, workforce development, pandemic benefits, and more.
And whereas HCJFS has also been the work home for tens of thousands of workers since the beginning and adapted to the changing needs of its workforce. And whereas HCJFS has fostered a legacy of compassion and customer service and continues to find more ways to reach out to Hamilton County residents with new and innovative programs. Now therefore be it proclaimed that today, January 12th, 2023, the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners honors the work and commitment of HCJFS and praises its employees for their years of dedication and for continuing to help Hamilton County residents today for a better tomorrow. And it is signed by all three of our commission board members. And I would like to ask Director Michael Patton to say a few words.
Thank you, Commissioners. Happy New Year. I haven't talked to you since last year. So Happy New Year. Congratulations. Thank you for this proclamation. Just want to say a few words in recognition of this, recognition of this honor from the commission. While our organization came to exist through legislation 75 years ago, legislation is just words on a piece of paper. It takes people to do the work. I'm proud that we have a team of dedicated and hardworking people and community partners who work with us every day to help us keep vulnerable adults and children safe from abuse and neglect, keep food on the table, connect people to jobs through our work at Ohio Means Jobs, determine eligibility for Medicaid, collect and distribute child support, and distribute rent and utility assistance more recently. We also can't do this work alone. We work with the courts, a network of foster care agencies and providers, the sheriff's office, long-term care facilities, a host of large and small social service agencies, the prosecutor's office, the clerk and the clerk of courts, just to name a few. I want to thank the Commissioners for this resolution and recognition of the important work this organization has done for county residents for the last 75 years. We remain committed to this important work this year and beyond. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I want to say that Director Patton, this is your one year anniversary this week. But you've been with Jobs and Family Services for how many years?
Twenty-eight years.
Twenty-eight years.
Yep.
Awesome. We're going to come around and present the proclamation and take a... Oh, I'm so sorry. Vice President.
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to you and to the organization. You know, as Commissioner Reese said, or President Reese said, you are the safety net for Hamilton County and the residents that we serve. And so oftentimes, we get calls in our office about many, many things. And we don't always know where to go with the concerns or the challenges that somebody is experiencing. And more often than not, it's JFS. It's like, oh, wait a minute, that's JFS, you know? And so I know that just from the volume of calls that we get, you are getting a hundred times that many calls we get. You are getting a hundred times that many calls from people that are really in desperate need, especially during a pandemic. And so you did rise to the challenge, the organization did as well. And I really want to offer a big shout out to yourself and all the employees of JFS for the continued good work and the continued work to always try to recreate so that you are addressing the needs in the right way for a changing community. It's, I know it's a challenge, and thank you for doing the work.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. Having been in the system for 28 years, it's obvious because of your impeccable perception of what's going on within that department, and I can come to you. And you have the answers. And if you don't have the answers, you know where to go for them. There was a little bit of a joke when I first started out as a social worker. I was asked to come to JFS. And I said, "I can't work there." And they said, "Why?" Because if you're a penny over for food or whatever, you can't give it to them. And I said, "I'd be fired the first day." But what I like now is that the system is looked at, being adjustable, going by the standards and the rules that you have, but realizing as a system, we need to look at all aspects of the family to be able to help and assist everyone that we see. So I'm glad that things have changed, and I'm glad that you are also the Director of Job and Family Services.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. We're going to come around and take a picture with you. And we do want to remind the people that 513 Relief Bus will be going out on the 26th of this month, January 26th. So again, we thank you for all that you all do and the services that you provide.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Let you go in front of me. Okay. Well, this Monday, we will be commemorating and honoring the legacy and the life of the late, great Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And we have a proclamation today to honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And so each of us will read a part of the proclamation. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born January 15th, 1929, in Atlanta, Georgia, and was assassinated April 4th, 1968. Whereas Dr. King grew up in the South under segregation, a policy that required Negroes to use separate facilities than whites and to attend different schools. He rightly believed that the policy of segregation was unjust, and he spoke out openly about it. He organized protests and marches to raise awareness and tried to effect change, which he did. Whereas he devoted his life to the advancement of civil rights and public service. He believed in a nation of freedom and justice for all and challenged all citizens to help build a more perfect union and live up to the purpose and the potential of America.
And whereas, at the age of 26, Dr. King led the 381-day Montgomery Bus Boycott, which was widely regarded as the earliest protest on behalf of civil rights in the United States and set groundwork for other actions to bring about fair treatment for Negroes. And whereas, after the boycott's end, Dr. King helped found the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, a highly influential civil rights organization that worked to end segregation throughout the South. Under Dr. King's leadership, the organization was also instrumental in the civil rights campaign in Birmingham, Alabama, in the spring of 1963, and the peaceful march on Washington in August of that same year, during which King delivered his famous "I Have a Dream" speech. And whereas, through his activism and inspirational speeches, Dr. King played a pivotal role in ending the legal segregation of Negro citizens in the United States, as well as the creation of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Voting Rights Act of 1965.
And whereas a proponent of nonviolent protests, Dr. King received the Nobel Peace Prize in 1964 at the age of 35. And whereas Congressman John Conyers first introduced legislation for a commemorative holiday four days after Dr. King was assassinated in 1968, the legislation stalled, and petitions endorsing the holiday containing 6 million names were submitted to Congress. And whereas Congressman Conyers and Representative Shirley Chisholm resubmitted King holiday legislation during each subsequent legislative session. Public pressure for the holiday mounted during the 1982 and 1983 civil rights marches in Washington. And whereas Congress passed the holiday legislation in 1983, which was then signed into law by President Ronald Reagan. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby recognize Monday, January 16th, 2023, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in all of Hamilton County. We can clap. And we will have this presented. There are several events, so we'll make sure those are presented. We will move to public comments.
Oh, yes. Would you like to?
Yes, I'm sorry. Vice President, I'm so used to it. I'm trying to get used to it. Yes.
So thank you for bringing the proclamation forward. You know, our employees enjoy this holiday, and many of them, I think, partake in some of the organizations that have events honoring and really celebrating the life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and his work and the lasting legacy that we all live with, the positive legacy where people are treated as one, as equals. And so I'm grateful that you brought the resolution forward and happy to celebrate today.
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you so much. I'm also very happy that we, this great man, this giant of a man, has been recognized again in Hamilton County. And so I always use his quotes everywhere I go. And I just have two of them I'd like to say today that really touch my heart and I try to live by. And the first one is, "The time is always right to do what is right." I really like people that can just take a couple of words and say something so profound. And then secondly, "Whatever your life's work is, do it well." A man, and I added a woman, should do the job so well that the living, the dead, and the unborn could do it no better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I do want to say that this board, I think we are walking, we continue to walk in Dr. King's legacy, the things that he was for, open housing, we're fighting for affordable housing and working with that, contract compliance. We've had the disparity study to make sure more, all businesses have equal opportunity. So we are trying to work, I think, and still, there's unfinished business of Dr. King. And I want to thank UC Health and the Medical School at University of Cincinnati. They're celebrating their 50th celebration of Dr. King. And that's going to be on Friday tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. And I'm just honored to be one of the honorees with the humanitarian award. So I just want to give them a shout out and looking forward to joining them. It's open and free to the public. We will now move to public comments. And I don't, it's kind of weird because I don't see us on Zoom. So how do we do this with the new technology? Okay, no one's on Zoom. Okay? And are there any cards? Anyone here? No one wanting to speak? Okay.
Why are we not seeing our meeting up there?
Yes. Commissioner Dumas indicated we're not able to see the meeting. Is that the new technology or? Yes, so we can, I think that we're used to seeing it. Might be helpful. Okay, so we have no cards. We have no public comments. Now we will move to comments from the commission. And I'm going to start this way today, so, until I get used to it. And I'll speak last today. Let's go with Vice President Drehouse.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of things. I'm sure he'll touch on it. We did get a sneak peek of the 513 Relief Bus last week. It is, it'll be a source of pride as it rolls around throughout Hamilton County and all the 49 jurisdictions. We're going to be providing many, many services on that bus with many, many partners to help people in the community, whether it's rent relief or something else related to JFS, or it's dental care, or it's mental health services. That all will be part of the effort to have the county more accessible to people throughout the county. So I'm sure you'll say more, but I was, it was fun to be part of the sneak peek. It's an impressive vehicle. I also delivered a proclamation on behalf of the commission chief Leininger, who is out in Springfield Township retired. He was born, raised, and is now retired from Springfield Township. It was a great ceremony. There were many, many people there talking about how, what a great guy he is. He's, you know, I had an opportunity to meet the chief on a number of occasions. And as I said that night, he was a man who led with compassion and understanding, and he had a real generosity about him. And we will miss him in Springfield Township. And so congratulations to him. And I also attended the swearing-in of Chief Thiago over at the City of Cincinnati. She is the new police chief. We've been working with Chief Thiago related to the new regional safety complex. And so I consider her to be a partner of this county commission in our work. But congratulations to Chief Thiago on behalf of the county. And then lastly, I attended the One Ohio Meeting in Columbus. I'm the rep from District 2, went up yesterday. We are moving along, and I've said this before and I'm going to say it again, a little more slowly than some of us would prefer. But we did get a timetable as to when applications will be received from Region 2, from all the regions throughout the state, and then when the vetting will take place at the state level and the funds will be released. So I will be happy to share that at the next meeting. My recollection is that the funding will actually become available around August of next year after the vetting takes place. But it won't be too soon because we need the help in this community. So I will continue to keep the board posted on the One Ohio activity. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas, thank you so much. Also visited the 513 Relief Bus, and it's absolutely perfect for our residents and what they need. There's no excuse for anyone in any part of Hamilton County because its schedules will be put up so you'll know where the bus is. And every service you can think about is in that building. It turned out really well. And I want to compliment you, Madam President, because you were persistent about what you thought needed to be added or taken away. We all, of course, got together on that and agreed. But it's just, it's absolutely perfect. So I want to thank you for that. And I also wanted to mention, we cannot forget about the miracle that took place in Hamilton County with Damar Hamlin. We know, and I'm not going to rehash that incident, but that was, in my opinion, a miracle that took place. And this gentleman is now back at home. So Hamilton County was praying, the world was praying, the whole country. And he, and hopefully, I wish him much success in recovery. There is a vacancy in the TID Commission, Transportation Improvement District. I need a rep from my office if you're interested in transportation and putting your input into that meeting. It'll be posted on our website as a board and commission, TID, and put in your application. That would be great. Last night, I swore in 35 board members, or board of directors for the Great Oaks Program, and it was just an honor to do that. Lots of politicians were there, but Great Oaks, they do great things. So I appreciate them allowing me to take on that responsibility. And that will end my report. Thank you. I just want to, I want to go back and highlight once again, Damar Hamlin. And what happened here and what we saw, people coming together. And as we go into Dr. King holiday, when we saw people of all races and backgrounds, young, old, I think it was 68,000 people, you could hear a pin drop. And to have everyone orderly, respectful. We all were fearful at the time. And to know that at that time, he flatlined. And I want to thank the medical teams, both that were there at the game. I want to really give a shout out to Coach Zach Taylor, I think, being the host city and the host team and how he was very calm, cool, collective, and understood that it's about human life now. It's not about a football game at that time. And how both coaches, no matter what, both fans, I don't care what you are a fan, everybody knew that this was bigger than football. This is about life. And for the teams to go down to a knee and people begin to pray and understanding that it was out of our hands but in God's hands. But, and then to be transported to University Hospital, UC Hospital, one of the top trauma hospitals in the whole country. And many said there was no way that he would survive this. But the technology that they had, I'm understanding, they had certain technology and equipment and had the intellectual talents of the doctors and those who showed up at visuals of, you know, all different backgrounds, both teams. And for him to open his eyes, for him to be able to talk, for him to be able to FaceTime and to be alive. And so I just want to, we're going to try to get the medical team down here from the University Hospital, UC Health Hospital, to also acknowledge them because it really put a light on what we have here in Hamilton County as it relates to healthcare. We've got the top. We've got the top of the top right here in our own city, our own county. So I wanted to highlight that and also thank all people from around the globe because the spotlight was on us in an emergency way. And we stepped up as a community in a unity way. And like I said, Dr. King talked about human life, and that's what we focused on. So I do want to highlight all those that were involved in that, in the leadership of the teams, the players. Just to see grown men, strong, crying, holding each other, hugging each other. And for our team to go over there, our captains of our team and their team to get together and say, "Hey, you know, this is about human life." So just wanted to highlight that. And I just, it just touches me so much. The other thing I wanted to say, my two colleagues talked about the 513 Relief Bus. I'm excited. Some people say, "I thought we had a bus." That was the body double. And I want to thank UC Health for letting us use that mammogram bus. We wrapped it. We helped 4,000 people. We know that there's a need out there. We helped 4,000 people keep the lights on, keep the rent paid, keep the mortgage paid, keep the water running, get the vaccine so that they could be alive. So that bus prototype proved that this is something that we should be doing on a permanent basis. So the 513 Relief Bus is Hamilton County on Wheels. It's taken us out of the offices and taken this mobile office to every zip code, to every municipality, and bringing resources through lots of partnerships. As Vice President Drehouse outlined, some of the partnerships. And there'll be a lot more partnerships that will be able to bring these services directly to you on January 26th is the kickoff. It will be at Corinthian Baptist Church, and you'll be able to apply for the rental assistance that we have. I think we got over 20 million additional dollars. You'll be able to apply for the mortgage assistance that we still have available. We had voted on $5 million. There's still money available. Property taxes, property tax time. If you're delinquent, we have a program to help you with that. So all of these things will be rolled out on the 26th of January at, starting at 10:00 a.m. at Corinthian Baptist Church. You can go to 513relief.org to get the full schedule as this bus will be going all over Hamilton County. So I just want to thank Ayesha Howard and her team, a planning and development team who was out there helping with the bus as well. I want to thank Eric Beck and his engineering team, inspecting and make sure the specs are right and everything. But this bus also has a lot of technology in it. A lot of technology in this bus. So we are being very futuristic, as Commissioner Dumas was saying as well. Also, I got a chance to provide a proclamation signed by all of us to Ms. Ebony J. Media. We are supporting women and small businesses. It's seven years of building her business from the bottom up, a young lady. And we were excited to be able to present a proclamation on behalf of our board to support her. I also attended and got sworn in at the OKI meeting today, and I'm on the Budget Committee. Most importantly, we had a huge announcement that all three of us was at with the President of the United States coming and announcing $1.6 billion. I'll say billion with a B, $1.6 billion for the Brent Spence Bridge and properties around it. And I want to thank our engineer, Eric Beck. We're going to have ODOT come in under the leadership of our engineer and one of our Tuesday meetings, have them show us what's happening, what's the process, what's the timeline. And we'll be able to ask questions and understand what's getting ready to happen now that the $1.6 billion has been announced and how many jobs are going to be created and those kind of things. So excited to hear that and look forward to that happening at our, one of our Tuesday meetings. And then lastly, I wanted to say that I wanted to thank everyone that came out for our swearing-in of Commissioner Dumas and for us getting promoted and elected as president and vice president. This place was packed with folks. And I just want to thank everybody that took time out of their schedule to be here. Wanted to say that we announced that we will have the state of the county that I'll be giving that address, the new date because of the governor. He took my date. He normally is in March, but he took my date. So we moved our date. I want everybody to get the date down. It's going to be Wednesday, January 25th, Wednesday, January 25th. And it's at 5:30. Doors open at 5:30 with a pre-reception, and the address will follow right behind it. It's free and you can come. So please get that new date out, January the 25th. That is a Wednesday. So that's mostly all I have. I just want to say that one word I think that describes our board is action. And our theme is "It's Time for Action." People without vision perish, and we will not perish because we have vision for all of Hamilton County. With that, I will go to our calendar. We have a public hearing. And what time is it? We have a public hearing, Mr. Beck? Oh, I'm sorry. Have a seat. You're not going to do the public here. We got to go here. I'm sorry. We'll get it together. Okay, Mr. Aludo?
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, I just have just a couple of comments. You have one by leave item today that I'm actually going to defer to Assistant Administrator Brugan on. But two things from comments. Number one, I just wanted to echo the congratulations to Chief Leininger on his retirement. In addition to all the positive things that Commissioner Drehouse said, Chief Leininger was a real friend to the county, especially as it related to 911 operations. to nine-one-one operations. The chief and I went to the State House on numerous occasions, possibly when both of you were up there, advocating for funding changes to the nine-one-one model. So Chief Leininger was a very strong advocate for the county. We haven't had to do as much on that in recent years, but I know going back in time, we fought many battles on that front together. So I just want to thank Chief Leininger and congratulate him on his retirement. Secondly, just to pile on to the thoughts about the 513 Relief Bus, just wanted, was good to join the commissioners out at the unveiling event, I guess, out at the Planning and Development Field Operations Site, and really just wanted to take this moment in time to thank all the folks out at the, at Planning and Development's Field Operation location out in Burlington. County Engineer Beck has a facility there as well, joined the board at the, at the event. But we don't get a chance to talk about the Planning and Development Field Crew very often. It is a small crew, I think ten to twelve people out there, but they just do a ton of work on behalf of this county. They manage, I believe, close to sixteen thousand fire hydrants on behalf of the community outside of the city of Cincinnati, on behalf of the twelve townships and numerous communities that they contract with because they do it so well. And they do that whether it is a hundred-plus degrees outside, or whether it's below zero outside. They're standing in that water, and they're making sure that those hydrants don't stay down if they're knocked out of service, so that if fire protection is needed from that hydrant, they're there. They also manage over three hundred miles of, of, of public storm sewer system and storm drainage system as well, as well as helping out in county facilities when there are, when there are snow events, they come out and help plow and clear parking lots, et cetera. So I want to thank everyone out there. I'm just going to take a moment to read their names here. William Bowes, Casey Cooper, Jesse Davis, Amy Engstrom, Jeff Gunn, who I know is of particular assistance to Ayesha and Trevina as they were rolling out the 513 bus, David Hoover, Connor Johnston, Kyle Lynch, Tyler Mahan, Jason Tony, Scott Wilson, and of course, under the leadership of Bruce McLean out there, and James Noiz and Mohammed Islam here in Planning and Development. So just wanted to take a brief moment to thank those gentlemen and women who don't get, we don't talk a lot about because they do their job so well, we don't hear about them all that often. So that's all I had in terms of comments, Madam President. I will defer to Assistant Administrator Brugan now to talk about our first budget adjustment for the year. There are several items in here, and some of which might require a little bit of context and explanation. So Mr. Brugan will walk us through that.
Sure. Budget adjustment number one, there's a number of items in here. This is actually unusual for us to bring a budget adjustment forward that's actually negative, we're actually reducing more than we're adding.
Excuse me, is your microphone on?
Is there a button up here that I need to press?
We can barely hear you. Yes, please.
I can lean in more, too.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Budget adjustment number one is a little bit unusual for us, because it's actually negative. We're reducing more than we're, than we're changing or adding to this resolution. But it's a number of things here. There is a new position in the Coroner's Office. This was actually something we knew was coming, but it was dependent upon a contract being signed, so we asked the Coroner's Office to hold on that until the contract was actually signed for some new services to Dayton Police. There's a reduction in one of our levy funds for some treatment services pending because of a closed facility. So we're waiting for a mid-year levy review before we officially appropriate those dollars back. Some small reductions in various funds where we ended the year slightly differently than we were expecting, which has caused an overappropriation in that fund, which means there's more appropriations there than there are resources. So we have two or three little ones that are literally in the, one of them is twenty-one cents. A couple of others are about six thousand dollars. In addition to those, there's a reduction for similar reasons in one of our stadium funds. It's a little bit larger, it's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then some grant moves. We have some changes in a coroner grant, and some changes to our, really in the ARPA fund, but it's related to some new dollars for the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Award from the federal government.
Okay. Vice President Drehouse, any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Dumas?
Just one question. The drug analyst, you say there's a new position, but is that in addition to another one? Is this the first time we're having a drug analyst?
No, there are other drug analysts there. This is a new position that's allowed, we knew was coming from the Coroner's Office, but it's fully funded through this new contract with Dayton Police.
So would you happen to know how many we have? I know we had an issue with the drug analyst. There was, you know, some public.
Like, we can get back to you with that number, but we definitely have multiple drug analysts.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Okay. Well, I will make a motion to approve by leave one. Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Dumas?
Yes.
Anything else, Mr. Aludo?
Nothing else, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did, I did not mention Trevina, who works with Ayesha, who's done a tremendous amount of work on the 513 Relief Bus, and gave us an outstanding tour. So I wanted to make sure that I didn't mention her. Okay, now to the public hearing. Mr. Engineer, Mr. Beck?
Thank you. Yes, I must talk louder. This is the first of two public hearings for the 2023 Sidewalk Repair Program. As you may recall, we're on a six-year cycle inspecting all the sidewalks along county roads in the unincorporated areas. This year, all of the properties that we looked at were in Colrain Township. All the property owners have been contacted by mail and given sixty days to make repairs. If they do not make those repairs, then they go on this list for our projects. This is the opportunity for anybody to speak for or against the repairs or the costs. This is the first of two hearings, and this is the thirty-fourth year that we've been doing this program. I can say I've been here for all thirty-four of them. So I don't know that there's anybody here to speak.
Yeah, I'm going to say if there's anyone here to speak on it. Okay, Vice President?
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
So the folks that are impacted received a notice, did they also receive a notice related to this public hearing?
Yes, they did.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas?
Just one question. All the sidewalks are in Colrain, and I'm wondering why.
It's just the way our program, the way we've split up the county into six parts so that we inspect them on a rotating basis. So it was six years previously that we did Colrain Township before.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. Greg Flamers, our, our project manager, come on.
I don't need you.
Yeah, go ahead.
We actually do have sidewalks in Springfield Township also, but Springfield Township pays for the repairs. The property owner does not pay. So they weren't notified about the public hearing because the township pays for it. So all the ones where the property owner is paying for this year is in Colrain Township.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Important clarification. Thanks, Greg.
Okay.
So what we would need to do is close this hearing, and we will have another hearing scheduled on February sixteenth for a second hearing.
Okay. I move to close the hearing. Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Okay, while you're up there.
We'll go into the next list.
I'm going to ask you, you have items one through six. If you go through all six items, and then I'll open it up for questions on any of the items.
Sure, I'd be glad to. Item number one is a resolution authorizing agreement between the City of Cincinnati and Hamilton County for the improvements of Fairbanks Road and Delhi Avenues. This is, was a municipal road fund project that was approved previously by the board. This is the agreement with the city, so we can get them one hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars from the municipal permissive auto tax fund to do this project. Item number two is a resolution to vacate fee and easement right-of-way for Breezy Acres Drive in Colrain Township. The board held a hearing on December eighth of last year, and this is the resolution allowing the vacation in fee. Item number three is a resolution authorizing an amendment to Capital Electric Line Builders, Inc., their contract for traffic signal maintenance. This is an adjustment to their, their hourly labor rates. Capital Electric is used by the Engineers' Office on emergency basis for traffic signal maintenance when our employees can't get out there, so that we have enough people to cover any emergencies. Item number four is a resolution authorizing the county engineer to prepare and submit applications to the OPWC for State Capital Improvement Program and Local Transportation Improvement Program projects. These grants would be effective July of 2023. They are for the Berkshire Road Culvert Replacement, which has a project cost of one point six-three million dollars, and the grant amount will be for ninety percent at one million four hundred and sixty-seven thousand. The remainder of the funds coming from permissive auto. And much more road, total project is one million dollars. We have a sixty percent grant for six hundred thousand, and the remainder would come from permissive auto. Item number five is the established, resolution establishing portions of Fields Erdel Road and Snyder Road in Sycamore and Sims Township. The board held an establishment hearing on November seventeenth of last year, and this would allow us to take any property owners that we can't reach agreement to, to allow it to go to court to decide on the price. Currently, we only have four that are potentials for that. We are still negotiating with them, so they may not need to go to court, but this would allow it to, to happen if we need to go to the appropriation process. And item number six is a resolution authorizing the consultant agreement for Daleen Pride, Government Affairs Consultant for a license plate registration audit. We've done this for the last several years. Ms. Pride goes out and pulls records on license plate registrations and makes sure that the funds are going to, to the county where they should be. Glad to answer any questions on any of those.
Thank you. I do have a question on item number six.
Yes.
Not necessarily the consulting fee, but more about how much do we get, or is that something you can get to us?
I can. I have the last three years for, you mean, come back from her contract, or total?
So how much do we get in total for the license plate registration?
For permissive auto, it's been going up. The county received eight point seven million dollars in 2020, and in 2022, we received just over nine million dollars.
Oh, good. Great. Open up for questions. Vice President Drehouse?
No, I was actually going to ask about item number six as well. So thank you for the clarity. Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas?
No questions.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to pass items number one through six.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we'll go to consent agenda. I'm going to ask Administrator Aludo to briefly go through the items and note where those items that have a budgetary number, please include that in your.
Hey, Madam President, happy to do that. So just walk through these very briefly. On your consent agenda packet, you've got the auditor's statement of financial transactions under ORC three nineteen point one five. This is the report the auditor provides monthly regarding financial transactions. Items eight through twelve are actually just items to receive for the record. These are agreements signed with homeowners who will have sewer backup prevention devices installed under MSD's Sewer Backup Prevention Program. Those are the agreements and covenants associated with having that device in their home. Item number thirteen is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar capital improvement item. This is awarding a bid for replacing selected doors and door frames at the Justice Center due to rusting and just general deterioration. Many of these are original to the building, which was constructed back in eighty-five. Item fourteen is award of a bid for renovation of Courtrooms A and B in the Justice Center. This relates to flooring, ceiling, walls that are in need of repair due to water leaks and just general age. Item number, and I'm sorry, that was, I think I said, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There is another capital project on your agenda. Item number fifteen, this is the award of, of a bid to Debra Kempe related to the replacement and upgrade of the fire alarm systems at eight-hundred Broadway and the Justice Center for two point two-eight-four million dollars. We have a one hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-dollar item, the award of a bid to DSR Contracting Restoration. This relates to the restoration of a support beam, actually in this building, in the Todd B. Portune Center. We have a thirty-three thousand dollar item for paying bills associated with monthly charges for our new phone system. We have the purchase of a Chevy Equinox in the Sheriff's Office for twenty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. We have the replacement of, of concession equipment at, this is through our Stadium and Parking Department, related to the purchase of, or the replacement of old concession equipment in the stadium to both upgrade the equipment and make it available in additional places to make it more convenient in terms of different points of sale within the stadium. That's a future project, that's not like for, for this weekend, but that's a capital project as part of our normal 2023 capital improvement budget. We have a purchase of a Ford F-150 in the Planning and Development Department that is net of trade-ins, three thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. I'm sorry, the, the concession equipment was four hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. We also have the purchase orders associated with flooring, furniture moves, and both on, on this floor and Juvenile Court, Planning and Development, and the Renew Office space in the Sheriff for five hundred and sixty-nine thousand. We have a couple of grants being awarded from the Solid Waste Management District, one for styrofoam recycling at ten thousand dollars, one for educational equipment and recycling infrastructure at Gorman Heritage Farm for nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. We are appointing a member to the Hamilton County Family Services Planning Committee, and updating and revising our Prevention, Retention, and Contingency Program under Job and Family Services to ensure that it is, that, that it is, that individuals who are survivors of domestic violence are eligible for services and funding under that PRC program. We also have two liquor permit applications and one travel request under the Coroner's Office to Orlando, Florida. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you for that, for that summary. Want to highlight, and then I'll ask my colleagues if there are some other areas they want to highlight. We are continuously funding based on contract obligations, but we're constantly funding upgrades to our PBS Stadium. And so when you look at concessions, four hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. I just want to highlight those things, because we're constantly working to make upgrades, and I think it's worth noting. In addition, I had heard about, we, all of us had heard about Gorman Heritage Farm, so I was happy to see that that's, we're, I'm happy to have some type of agreement there. And then also, the appointment will be of Gregory Johnson of the CMHA, who will be to the Hamilton County Family Services Planning Committee. Those are all that I had to highlight. I will turn it over to Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight item thirteen, which is related to the Justice Center and the cell door replacement. We continue to invest there in a very old building that needs repair, and so I just wanted to highlight the investment there. And item, actually, it's thirteen and fourteen for two different things. I was going to ask about item twenty, with purchasing a vehicle for three thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars, but now I realize it was a replacement situation. So I was going to ask where the dealer was.
Right.
So I could go purchase a car. But yeah, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question about items eight through eleven. The SBU forms that would be turned in, concerned about, I know SBU program has been a bond of contention for this board as far as whether or not we're impacting as many people as we'd like to, but I'm concerned about the lateness of the submission of the forms. One, you know, it's from May to July, September, and then September again, and why the forms were so late being submitted. Because as we look at that system, in its were so late being submitted, because as we look at that system, MSD system, and try to audit who's being impacted, it's a little hard when they're holding those forms for so long, so if you could explain that?
So yeah, so these are forms that I sign off on during the year, so as they're signed off on and executed, MSD can move forward. So this is just the board receiving them for the record. We'll try to get them to the board on a more consistent basis so you can see what's happening just on a month-by-month basis as opposed to a big batch at the end of the year.
That'd be great, thanks. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt seven, item seven through 28.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now we have an executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning MSD. I make a motion to go into executive session.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.